...two thousand and twelve Lawrence City Commission meeting. We're going to begin this evening with proclamation and that's to proclaim the month of February two thousand and twelve as Career and Technical Education Month. Is there a speaker here on that this evening? Oh, great, hiding back. Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. My name is Jennifer Flippin. I'm the Associate Director of Education at Pinnacle Career Institute here in Lawrence. Thank you for having us here tonight for the proclamation regarding career and technical education. Lawrence campus is one of four Pinnacle Career Institutes in the area and we serve adults in career education in Lawrence and the surrounding areas in the fields of medical assisting, massage therapy, wind turbine technician, and health information technician. I've brought with me here tonight just a couple students and they're going to just explain why they chose career education. Tyler?
I'm Tyler Hanson and I'm a professional fitness trainer. Before going to Pinnacle Career Institute, I worked at a factory. I realized it's not what I want to do. August sixteenth, two thousand and ten, I began the personal trainer program. June two thousand and eleventh, through the schools program, I went to the Professional Fitness Institute in Las Vegas and I took the test to become National Strength and Conditioning Association certified. And only a year and a half later, now I'm doing what I went to school to do and love every minute of it. I'd like to say thanks to Pinnacle Career Institute for helping me attain the knowledge and skills to have a career, not just a job.
I'm Joseph Landry. I actually have two degrees. One of them is in philosophy and theology and so I can either teach or write books, which I did neither of them, so I spent the last six years bartending and that's I guess what a four-year degree in philosophy will get you. So I needed, so I needed, you know, find a specific, you know, purpose for it. So I already did the four years of, it was like four years of partying pretty much, so let's be honest, that's what college is. So I'm done with my rite of passage and, you know, I'm thirty now, so it's time to, you know, find a specific reason to be on the workforce instead of having a job, I was looking for a career and that's what I really wanted. So I'm a current student at Pinnacle Career Institute and, you know, definitely found my calling, what I really want to do and I'm glad that I didn't join the overwhelming statistic of all the other, you know, four-year dropouts and dump, you know, forty thousand dollars into something that I didn't go into. So I'm really happy to be that a career institute exists. I'm really happy to be a part of that. I appreciate it.
I'll read the proclamation and then, I'll read the proclamation and then present it to you here, all right? Whereas February first through twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. And whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas career and technical education provides Americans with a school-to-career connection and is a backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce which fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to America's leadership in the international marketplace. And whereas career and technical education gives high school students experience in practical, meaningful applications of basic skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, thus improving the quality of their education motivating potential dropouts and giving all students leadership opportunities in their fields and in their communities. And whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts of career and technical educators, business, and industry stimulate the growth and vitality of our local economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for career fields forecasted to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade. Now therefore, I, Aaron Cromwell, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, to hereby proclaim the month of February two thousand and twelve to be Career and Technical Education Month. And next up this evening, we have a recognition. It is the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods.
Hello. As you all know, my name is Gwen Klingenberg and I am the President of the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods. And I would like to invite everybody, all the city commissioners and staff, because as you know, LAN spends a lot of time visiting with everybody, and also the community because everybody lives in a neighborhood. And we are having our twenty-fifth anniversary and we are celebrating on Kansas Day, actually, because that's when it got started, January twenty-ninth, which is this coming Sunday, six-thirty, at the North Lawrence Depot Visitor Center. We also started a few, a couple of years ago, an Outstanding Neighborhood Service Award, which we think that our two honorees this time are extremely important for our twenty-fifth anniversary because Steve Lopes actually was one of the people who actually started LAN and of course, we all know Senator Marcy Francisco, who has been very important in neighborhood issues. So I'd like you to come and I'd also like you to take the time and visit and meet with and thank our honorees.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'll read the recognition here now and present it to you. Whereas the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods was created to bring neighborhoods together to work with the City of Lawrence on long-range planning issues and daily life issues that affect all neighborhoods and residents of Lawrence, Kansas. And whereas the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods has been working for twenty-five years to provide timely feedback to city officials on neighborhood concerns and issues regarding city policies, services, and programs. And whereas the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods supports individual neighborhoods and works to ensure each neighborhood has the support of the community as well as all neighborhoods working together to ensure the quality of life vital to Lawrence to continue to grow while maintaining each neighborhood's unique character. Now therefore, I, Aaron Cromwell, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, along with my fellow city commissioners, recognize the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods on January twenty-nine, two thousand and twelve. We will move on now to our consent agenda. All matters on consent are considered under one motion and enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion of those items. If separate discussion is desired, that item will need to be pulled off of consent to be considered separately. Is there an item on consent that a member of the commission would like considered separately? Is there an item on consent that a member of the public would like pulled for separate If not, then I would like to add to consent, to claims to two hundred and twenty-four vendors totaling one million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. With the addition of claims, is there a motion to accept consent? Motion made by Vice Mayor Shum, seconded by Commissioner Amick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes five-zero. City managers report, Dave?
Good evening. Mayor members of the commission would like to go through this week's report quickly. On an annual basis, we put together a report that indicates the number of residential lots that are available for a building permit and in which areas in the community additional infrastructure is needed according to our subdivision regulations and infrastructure requirements. You see a copy of the updated annual report for two thousand and eleven. Not too many surprises. Again, we've had a slowdown in residential activity. We've also had a slowdown in subdivision creation, but we think that this is a valuable tool, not only for city planning purposes, which we use in a number of different departments, but also for information to the community. As you know, we're going to have a public meeting to discuss the possibility of relocating transit offices in a downtown hub for our transit system at the Santa Fe Station. That meeting is on February the first, Wednesday evening, from five to seven, at the Santa Fe Station there on East Seventh Street. Bob and Diane and others are working on that. As you know, from our budget discussions, we've made a big emphasis of working to reduce our healthcare costs through increased employee activity and focus on their health. We have become a participant in the Work Well Kansas Program. A number of other entities in the state are participating with that. We've also had a successful launch of our Well Care Clinic at Lawrence Memorial Hospital that allows city employees and designated individuals under that city employees' coverage to participate in the city clinic at that location. And we're getting good responses from employees and others that they think that's going to be a valuable tool for them. Again, our purpose is not only providing the increased healthcare opportunity for employees, but we think it's also going to help us contain some healthcare costs. So we're excited to see that that is improving. And the final item on this week's report is, to some extent, a work in progress, but we wanted you to see it. We've put together an inventory of city-owned properties. Commissioner Dever made inquiry about that issue, I believe, when we were talking about the common ground proposal, the farming, the gardening on certain vacant city plots. And the question was, well, what does the city own and are we sure that we don't have spare property? And you see a list there and we've both got it in a spreadsheet, a listing of the property and then also a map and you can zoom in and out. We've got quite a bit of property under city ownership and we've gone through it, continuing to look at it. I think I'd indicated that the property that the city owns at the far west terminus of Bob Billings Parkway now is likely to be in our kind of spare inventory. I think we want to wait until that intersection, that interchange is constructed and we've kept you all advised about that status. That construction may happen in the next few years. The property would probably be part of the road project, but once that road project is completed, I think we may be able to look and see whether that property could move. We've also got some property around town that we've acquired for drainage purposes, residences and such that have taken on too much water and the best solution is just to buy the property out. And in many cases, we don't want that property to be rebuilt on. We don't want to pay for it twice, essentially. So we've got a few of those tracks. Some of those tracks are going to be involved in the community gardening project as well, but we're continuing to look at this and see if there's some excess inventory in the city ownership. Be happy to respond to any questions, comments that you all might have.
Thanks, Dave. Questions?
I could ask about the mowing, but I think I'll leave that alone. The mowing of all this ground, I think I'll leave that alone.
Yeah, the mowing, the care of it is, it's a challenge, but it's been a good exercise for us to look at, probably have to look at it on a periodic basis, three hundred and fifty-five parcels of different size and configuration, so.
Dave, just curious, the individual listings, are these, whenever it's just not continuous? Because a lot of them look like there's multiple listings on particular property.
That's, I think that's correct. There's a number of them where they're just, it's just a designation that the county puts on the parcel. So some of those parcels could be very large, some of them could be small.
And they could be within one park, could have three, four parcels?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thanks. Great. Thank you very much. Moving on to regular agenda, the first item up is renaming a portion of Eleventh Street.
Chuck's just going to provide a brief introduction to this item and let the commission know the notification that we have provided to impacted property owners.
Basically, the proposal here is to rename Eleventh Street from Mississippi Street West to Missouri Street as Fambro Drive. We notified all the owners along this property, or along this corridor, none of them are addressed off of Eleventh Street. The only one that was addressed off of Eleventh Street was the fraternity, Delta Tau Delta. They are not included within the area that we've defined for the renaming. We sent letters out to everybody, both residents and property owners. Several of them are rentals. We heard no responses, so our recommendation is to go ahead and have the commission authorize the city to go ahead and rename this section of Eleventh Street to Fambro Drive. And we can answer any questions.
Questions?
We will notify all the agencies and everybody that needs to be notified, post office and stuff of this and emergency services, so, and we'll put up the street name sign so there shouldn't be any confusion as to where Fambro Drive is located.
Costs associated with this?
You know, probably a couple hundred dollars in sign materials, nothing significant.
Okay. Any questions?
Just one real quick. We haven't heard anything back from emergency services. Has there been a problem of any kind?
Shouldn't be.
We've talked about it. We just want to bring things about the GPS systems and maps. Everybody pretty much knows where they're at.
Okay. Thank you. Public comment on this?
Live almost directly across from where Don Fambro lived and built his house. You're proposing to, from Mississippi to Missouri, Don Fambro Drive, from Missouri to West Campus Drive, Eleventh Street, from Eleventh, one block, West Hills Terrace, one block, West Hills Parkway. Ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. I spend a lot of time in my yard. You'd be surprised how many people stop and ask me streets and particularly directions because of the differences in the names and you're just adding confusion to the situation. I have nothing against Don Fambro. It's the principle of it. Confusion. Little wonder corporate America drives by Lawrence, Kansas, goes to Peak of Manhattan or Lethal or Shawnee Mission.
Thank you for the public comment.
I'm Judy Bologna with Visiting Nurses here in Lawrence. I'm here to, as a proponent for naming Fambro Drive. It's of no concern to me whether it's between Missouri and Mississippi or whether it's Eleventh Street. It makes sense to me, but I wanted to just say and publicly say that Don Fambro was a strong proponent for the community and you all know about his, him as a sports legend, but as a citizen and as a volunteer and a fundraiser, he, for the last seven years of his life, was a strong proponent for visiting nurses and the services we provide. And it would not be, I think, appropriate for me and I think probably half the room here to come and talk about how much in support we are of recognizing him. So thank you for your time.
My name's David Lawrence. I've been associated with Don Fambro for thirty-five years, I believe. He's been a part of this community since nineteen forty-five, I believe, when he came back. His loyalty and love for Lawrence sometimes defies logic to where you would think the man didn't have any common sense. He grew up in the state of Texas, was Texas High School Football Player of the Year, went to University of Texas and just because his commanding officer, Ray Evans, KU legend, had asked him to just come and look at Lawrence one time before you go back to Austin after the war was over, because they served in the war together and as soon as he came on campus and looked over the community, decided this is where he wanted to be. He's served in numerous capacities as a student athlete, a coach, assistant coach. I've witnessed him speak to probably hundreds of civic groups. People have heard of him talking to the Kansas football team. He's, he has spoke to our public schools and their athletic teams, their grade schools, junior highs, high schools. Never once do I remember him ever being compensated nor did he ever ask. He had several opportunities after gaining rewards for being Coach of the Year on two occasions, but never once considered leaving. He's fired twice, didn't have enough common sense to get out after he's fired and just wanted to continue to serve the community, actually raising funds the first time after he's fired for the coach that preceded him. In fact, when I met him, it was on a recruiting trip. He's probably the one that talked me into coming to Kansas and he had just gotten fired a couple of years earlier. He loves this community. His wife was a big part. She was one of the finest English teachers in Lawrence that's ever been here. Sixty years. He's certainly not what you see today in coaches. He did not get rich financially, but he certainly wasn't poor. I think this would be a perfect way to honor a man. Numerous fundraising events, charities, he's been a part of. And if you have any questions, knowing him pretty well, would be glad to ask, answer any of those. There's a couple people have known him longer, but I appreciate everyone, all of you that have heard this and for you, of course, all the things you've done, but I think it's a good thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Janet Campbell. I'm the Director of Audio Reader and Kansas Public Radio. Our address is eleven twenty West Eleventh Street and I've worked there for thirty years. We're a twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week service and I can tell you that it's very confusing to give directions and to try to find our studios as it is. And I, while I respect the intent, I think this would be, I strongly oppose this change. If this would happen, Eleventh Street would change names three times within eight blocks. So for example, we have hundreds of visitors each week, many of them elderly without GPSs and they call and so if I would say, oh, to get to our studios from the east, you simply take Eleventh Street, but now Eleventh Street's going to end at Mississippi, you're going to jog a half a block and then it's going to become Don Fambro Drive and you'll go four blocks and midway through your drive, it's going to change again to Eleventh Street and then you'll go halfway up the hill and you'll see our sign and turn. Now be careful because if you go too far, Eleventh Street's going to end again after a half a block and divide into West Hills Terrace or as it curves, it's going to become West Campus Road. So you can imagine when someone calls and they want to visit our studios or they're a prospective volunteer, it is very confusing as is and this, I think, is going to only complicate matters. So I, as I said, I strongly oppose this and I hope that you will maybe find some other way to honor Coach Fambro.
My name is Hank Booth and I want to say, first of all, that I'm not here tonight representing the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce. I'm representing Hank Booth as a resident of Lawrence and Douglas County for nearly all of my life and serving on the KPR Advisory Board. I hope I don't get in trouble with the staff and Janet for making these comments tonight. I'm fairly sure if we had a vote of folks in Lawrence, we'd probably get a pretty strong majority to get this done. I won't go over the Don Fambro story. It's legendary. We've all heard it. Each of us had our own personal experiences over years and years with Don. I went to school with his son, Preston, Lawrence High School. I've gotten to know his younger son through the years, of course, with his work that he's done in the area out north and other areas as well. But I want to suggest tonight in my time that naming this street also represents an honor for his beloved wife, Dell. For three decades, a very tough, but very fair, an excellent English teacher at Lawrence High School. My son, Andy, had Mrs. Fambro for junior English and his proudest moment, I think, was getting an A on one of her end-of-the-semester projects. I don't think he got an A for the semester, but that one project made her A-list and that didn't happen many times. So in a way, and all of the things that the families of coaches and the families of their and those extended family members, the things that they do and those things that they accomplish individually, we hear little about. But in Lawrence, Kansas, when we talk about Don Fambro, most of us who've had kids or attended Lawrence High School will always think immediately as well of Dell Fambro. So in this way, we can honor a woman who taught, taught our kids, did a wonderful job and also salute Don Fambro as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously, I didn't play for Don Fambro. Some people would say I run as slowly as I speak, but Don probably had as much positive influence on my life as anyone, no matter what happened in his career at KU. His love for Lawrence and the university never wavered. And as Hank alluded to, if you approve this sign, Don would also want you to think of Dell, his wife of sixty years. Don and Dell were both outstanding educators and we would be so proud and inspired, thousands of us, whenever we looked at this sign that said Fambro Drive. As far as Janet's comment, I understand her feelings. I think Eleventh Street will still remain Eleventh Street, especially since it's such a short distance between Mississippi and Missouri. Personally, I don't think it will be that confusing. I live also in that neighborhood and I think people will understand that Fambro Drive is just part of Memorial Stadium and thank you for considering this and I hope you support it.
Thank you.
I teach in the German department at KU. We have a research institute and library close to KPR and Audio Reader and so everything that Janet Campbell has said applies to us. It isn't a matter of a very large number of people coming to us, but it is a question on the one hand of principle. I think that there must be other ways to honor people as important as Fambro, but it's a matter of the usefulness of such designations as Sixth Street, Ninth Street, and Eleventh Street for navigation. I mean, this is such a practical issue and for us, it is a question of giving directions. Usually it's by Mississippi and then coming up on Eleventh Street. It's difficult enough and this is something that also relates to a concern. We have, we're in the process of renovating a small building that used to be KJHK. It's a historic building. It has been recognized as on a historical It has been recognized as on a historical state register. It's the oldest building on the university campus. It was built by James H. Lane. And I think that this is a place that we would like to show as a very historic place. And, again, the question of how you get to it, and I think that you should reconsider doing it the way it has been outlined. Thank you.
I didn't come here to talk about this, but I guess I have an opinion about everything. I grew up at 10th and Alabama, just a block away from here. And I'm wondering if there's just another way to honor Don Fambro, the road that goes from 11th Street by the side of the stadium on the west side. I think if that was Don Fambro Way with a huge sign, that would do equally as well. And I'm not thinking just of right now, but 100 years from now, 200 years from now, you know, it's breaking up the streets into these small things, and who else is going to come? I mean, we already have a precedent before, now this one. People are going to come forward with equally loved people in the community, and I just think there could be other ways to do it that won't confuse future generations.
My name is Walt Hauck, and like Joe said, you can tell I never played for Don either. What a great way to honor him, for somebody to plug in on their GPS and see Fambro Drive. Okay? Wouldn't that be great? Do we want to name a street after somebody and then hide it? So if you've got GPSs, you've got all this other stuff that you're afraid people can't find someplace, wouldn't it be a great honor for them to pull up and ask somebody, "What's this Fambro thing?" To me, that would be a great situation, and that's what we want to do. I travel to my grandson's Little League game, so I go in on Google, I go in on all of this stuff, and they tell me how to get to places in Shawnee, Michigan, Wichita, and every place else. I guarantee you, those directions will be picked up in Fambro. It might take a couple of years, but it will be plugged in that way, and this would be a great way to honor him, because all of these things that people are mentioning would be there for them to see and for them to ask if they didn't know. Now, secondly, for Fambro, I'm about as old as dirt, so I'm close to what Don was, and so for over 50 years, I've known the man. I've known him as Mr. Fambro. I've known him as Coach. And finally, I knew him as Don. I'm fortunate enough to be in athletics a little bit, and I handled all of the travel for the football team when Fambro coached as an assistant, as a head coach, as an assistant, as a head coach, as somebody that recruited money for the university, and finally, as all through that time, as somebody that supported Lawrence. It's just baffling to me. I have seen him in the locker room after a loss. I've seen him in the locker room after a win as a non-player. I've ridden with him in a cab when we had transportation problems on the road. I've seen him react to every situation, and I have never seen him react in a way that's disrespectful to people, to athletics, or to anything else. If we can't honor this man, there can't be a man alive that will pass away that needs to be honored. Fam was a super guy. Wasn't just, as David said, it wasn't just in the sports field. It was more outside the sports field. And if any of you ran into him at Hy-Vee at breakfast in the morning, and he couldn't hardly hobble in because of injuries and replacements of joints and everything, and he was as positive as you could be, I would hope that you would name this street this way. And I would hope that you would pray that it would get on everybody's GPS, and it would get on everybody's directional list that wants to get to someplace that's on 11th Street. Wouldn't it be fun for somebody to walk into one of these addresses on 11th Street and say, "What's this thing with Fambro? Why does this break up here, break up here, and in the middle, it's Fambro? What's that all about?" Then you can tell the story of one of the greatest men that this city has known.
Mercy Francisco, 1101 Ohio. I guess I'm here to speak out for my neighborhood. I live at 1101 Ohio. I believe this is a much better proposal than when we heard renaming Missouri Street, although I know that that would have been a really fun thing to do. I'm hoping you might at least consider keeping the last block or half-block as you reach Mississippi 11th. So, in fact, on your GPS, you would turn at 11th, it might turn into Fambro Street, and then you would continue on 11th. I think the most confusing location for this would be at that intersection of 11th and Mississippi. I've been on the commission before. Good luck.
At least we aren't in Topeka. Is there further public comment? Back to the commission, then, or there are questions?
If I could, I'll just build on a little bit. I initially spoke with Dave about, what is this ordinance? Number 8695. Just a little history. I haven't talked to commissioners about this. I think Mike and I had a brief conversation last meeting, but Sue Hack had given me a call a few months back and gave me a heads up. The guy, David Lawrence, might be giving me a call to talk about honoring Don Fambro in some way. I know David very well. I don't know if Sue knew that at the time, but any rate, I've been on a hiatus for a while. I moved away for about 20 years, so I missed some of this. But when I first came back to town, immediately when Sue said this, one, she's a mentor of mine and somebody that, you know, is a big reason that I actually got involved in the city commission here. I know she brought this up before, as Senator Francisco alluded to. And so I was happy to, I would have been happy to pick up the ball and run with it. But it was easier, because I had met Don when I first moved back to town through Visiting Nurses Association. I got involved with their first, what is it, Dying Dance Donate, 3D event? And Don was their spokesperson. It was very cool. My son was, he did a video that was to go and DVDs for everybody to watch at their houses on the evening of the event. And Don was the first person that we did a video of, his testimony for the Visiting Nurses Association. And so my son got to know him a little bit as well, and I was really, really glad that he was able to cross somebody like that. And then, as he's living here, he's hearing more and more about this guy who was, he would have just, who knew? Could have been an uncle of his or something. Great uncle, excuse me. Any rate, great, great guy, very humble, and my father knew him very well as well, and I just heard nothing but great things. As others had mentioned here, Don was, he was fired twice, and he stayed. And he didn't just stay in Lawrence or live in Lawrence. I mean, he really was active in Lawrence, and he was as much an ambassador for Lawrence as he was for the University of Kansas. So, in initially looking into this, David giving a call to the university to give a heads up that this was being proposed, at that time, they had already set in motion Fambro Way, which is going to be the west entrance, it'd be the northwest side of the stadium there. There's an entrance, basically, it's the continuance, I believe, of Missouri Street that goes on into the stadium. That is going to be Fambro Way. And as we got to talking about this, we decided that it probably be best to collaborate on this and dedicate both streets at the same time. So, we're looking at doing this, the spring game, April 28th is the spring game this year, to dedicate Fambro Drive and Fambro Way. So, the university is on board with this as well, and rather than go our separate ways on naming two different streets, we thought this would be great to just do it, do it all together. And it was great. I appreciate staff's help and others that came up with the ideas of, you know, exactly where to do this, so that we weren't changing people's addresses to make it a bit easier. I understand there may be just a little additional confusion, but I have faith, like someone said, "We don't want to confuse the future generations," but I have faith that they will be less confused than we are, hopefully. And they'll find their way on Fambro Drive. So, just wanted to give a little bit more background on that, and I'll be supporting it, of course.
How it works, I guess. Is it possible to, I can see the confusion that some of the speakers may note of, would it be possible to put, if we go ahead and put the name Don Fambro Drive underneath it, also have 11th Street? Is that a possibility for the continuity of the 11th Street, or is that confusing?
Anything's really possible. It's just going to be the size of the sign. Obviously, the lettering for Fambro Drive will match the lettering of other signs, and if you want that smaller, it might be harder to see, unless you want it the same height.
Wouldn't really want it any smaller, but I didn't know if, I didn't know if this would be a possibility.
I mean, the sign blanks are, you know, we can get sign blanks as big as we want. We make all kinds of different size signs, so it could be done.
Just an idea. Seems like the people who are operating their institutions and then homeowners have some concern about that. I don't know if that's a, helps clarify it a little bit, because if you did tell somebody it's on 11th Street, they would certainly see the 11th Street marker, as well as all of us who want to see Don Fambro's name up there will recognize that as well. So, I don't know if that helps the situation at all. Idea?
Looking at that, is it a permanent arrangement, or just as a temporary?
I was thinking of it as a permanent arrangement. It makes sense to do it.
Yeah. I'm wondering about, at least there at 11th and Mississippi, me, where people are coming on to, are you talking about on each of the intersections going up there?
Well, I would think you would want to have it on each post where there's a sign that, so they could identify it's still, they're on the 11th Street route, as opposed in addition to being on the Fambro Drive. I don't want to detract from the naming of the street, but I also don't want it to be a point of confusion for people.
The street isn't straight, too, is the other, you know, is the other issue here. I mean, there's, talking about the reason the street changes names, well, it's moving around. It's not, you know, all of our numbered streets are numbered streets, and they're rolling through. This numbered street happens to have campus in the way, and universities laid out a little differently, and we're having to go around it. And we are, you know, this isn't in line, the section that's 11th now is not in line with 11th Street. Makes a bit of a jog there.
Yeah.
It's just a point.
Well, I guess, as I look at it, as I look at it, Vice Mayor, is that, you know, if we were looking at a temporary signage at 11th and Mississippi that would be able to help people, you know, navigate through the area, and I don't know what a temporary time is there, but you could look at it that way. I remember a couple of years ago, we actually looked at an idea where there was a request that came in, and I think it was through Athletic Corporation, about, you know, some development that was going to happen on the east side of the stadium, and we were going to be asked to look at moving 11th Street to tie it in to 11th Street coming in from the east. So I think that, you know, there's all kinds of things, you know, that's been a part of this whole issue over the last several years. So, I just think that, you know, the item that is before us is whether or not we think it is appropriate to change, you know, that portion of 11th Street from Mississippi to Missouri Street, you know, to rename it as Fambro Drive. I personally believe it should happen. If it's going to take, if we believe that confusion is going to be bad enough for a while, then I think that we put a marker at 11th and Mississippi. I don't believe that we probably need it at each one of the intersections, but, you know, to help with people being able to get directions coming from Mississippi Street, because I'm going to think that that's going to be the main entrance in looking at it. So, I think that is a help.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, looking at this, when you look at the map, it's important to, I think, to realize, this is a couple of block-long section right next to one of the largest landmarks in town. And that 11th Street does not go to the east, and 11th Street does not go to the west. You have to jog down to catch 11th on down, but the street does not, does not go through, like, therefore, I mean, and no one addresses off of this street either. So, that's, I mean, if we had a number of folks addressing off this, that would, boy, that would, could be extremely confusing, but with all due respect to those individuals, Janet, and I really do appreciate that, that it is challenging getting directions over there, but a lot of that is geography, is topography, I guess, versus cartography. And, you know, we're, the streets aren't straight there, and that's largely a product of the layout of the university and of, superimposed upon the city. So, I don't have an issue with the renaming of this particular section. I think it's, of all the streets that we have in town, it's probably the least confusing and one that we could, that we could come up with to make a change on, being as no one's, no one's addressing off of it. It's a few blocks long, and it doesn't continue with that name continuously in either direction.
Yeah.
Sir?
Mayor, we're going to need to be working on, a little bit on the signage anyway. We'll be in cooperation with the university. The sign at Mississippi and 11th Street, which would now be Mississippi and Fambro Drive, is actually a, one of those KU white letters on blue signs there, so we'll obviously be working with KU. The other thing to keep in mind is that this precedent of kind of the dual naming is not unheard of. We've done that in some of our older neighborhoods, where we have the current name, and then we've got in smaller lettering, the old name that.
Henry Streeter, yeah.
... town site. So that's, it's not inappropriate. I think if it's the, as opposed to maybe doing the design this evening, if it's the, if it's the commission's wish to proceed with this, you can adopt the ordinance on first reading, we'll proceed with second reading here in a couple of weeks, and then I've got confidence that our staff can, can work on a design solution, probably in cooperation with KU. We want to do it so that it works with what they're going to be doing on Memorial, next to Memorial Stadium there, the main street, kind of follow-through. I think we can work on that and try and find ways to include 11th Street in some of those, perhaps all, all five of them, but at least at Mississippi and perhaps at Missouri to make it, make it clear. I think we've got some, some abilities to try and include that. We've certainly got a precedent where we're trying to do that.
Okay. And just to be clear, it's Fambro Drive. We'll time out. Vice Mayor, might I say, Don Fambro? Just be clear.
No, I'm all right.
Okay. We need a motion on this, or?
Yes, sir.
Motion would be probably to direct staff to, would that be appropriate?
You would want a motion to approve ordinance number 8695 on first reading.
Mayor, I'd move to approve ordinance 8695, renaming 11th Street from Mississippi to Missouri Street to Fambro Drive, and direct staff to come up with a solution that may include 11th Street in that same sign.
On the signage?
On the signage, right. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Carter, seconded by Commissioner Amix. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next up, we have requests to establish no parking along the north side of 12th Street between Indiana and Mississippi Street.
You don't have to go.
You don't have to go.
And if we could move on out of the, out of the room here, but before talking, I'd appreciate it, we're going to try to get on with our meeting. If we could get those doors closed, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. At the October and November Traffic Safety Commission meetings, they heard a request to establish no parking along the north side of 12th Street west of Indiana. The request came from some people that are renters in the area, and requesting that that no, that no parking be installed because of concerns about safety, access of emergency vehicles, access of sanitation vehicles, delivery vehicles, any type of large vehicle in that area. There was considerable discussion at both October and November meetings. There were some people that own property in the area that were opposed to the request, others that lived there that were in favor of the request. The fire chief did support the request at one of the meetings, and, excuse me. At the November meeting, the commission did approve a motion on a five to three vote to remove the parking along the north side. The three people that were opposed to it, one had concerns about residents that had lived there for a number of years being opposed to it. They had concerns about there not being consensus within the neighborhood, and then one had a concern about taking parking away from people that pay taxes. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Opinions from Fire and Medical would be the one that I've got. Do we have, what, what do we have from?
Can you relate with the fire chief, why the liberties?
Yeah, the, the fire chief was at the October meeting. Right now, if they have to get down into the area, they can't get through along the north side. They have to go down the south side against traffic on that one-way pair in there. And if there was a fire towards the middle of that block where the parking occurs, it would be very difficult for them to reach over parked vehicles to get to those structures.
Is, is that street a normal width street?
It, actually, the street is very wide, but it has a median in it also.
I guess I meant one length, one, each direction.
Yeah, each side only has about fifteen feet of width for movement of traffic on each side of that median. So, if you take up, you know, six feet or so for parking, that only leaves about nine foot for vehicles to get through.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there public comment on this item? Yeah, please, just step up to that. Thank you.
My name is Diana Robinson. I live in Prairie Village, Kansas. I was the one that brought the concern to this issue of the parking immediately when my son moved in here. It was so narrow to go down that one side. We've known three or four people who've already had their mirrors swiped off because of the narrowness of it. The cars aren't parking within twelve inches of the curb, so that leaves even less space. You can't move over because the median is about that high with a rock wall, so you either, like, tear your car up this way, or tear your car up that way. It's illegal to go into the cul-de-sac backwards, but at times you have to. I mean, we have a huge pickup, and we can't get down, down through there safely. And when I started this issue, I talked to people in the city works, and like, everybody I called said the street's a nightmare. The trash trucks have to back down, the plows have to back down, they can't even service the north side of the street. And so, when I started my little crusade here about this issue, everybody keen, wanted to kind of pass the buck until I got to the fire department, and they said, we'll take a look at it. And Mark Bradford and Jim King both were very concerned when they looked, and it's like he said, they came and spoke at the meeting, Mark did, and he just said that if they had to fight the fire in that part of town where this, where the, you know, houses are old, they fight the fires differently, and that they would not be able to reach any of those windows with the ladder and the pumper truck because it was too short going over the median and the parked cars, and that the outcome of a fire, fighting it from the south side of the cul-de-sac, would definitely have different results than fighting it on the north side where you could pull up in front of the houses. I, I'm just concerned. I just think it's a safety issue that maybe hadn't been addressed, obviously, for years, but just because it's always been like that, doesn't make it right. And I understand the parking is a problem, but the house to the east is Sean's house. There's no guarantee that, that those people that live there are going to get those parking spaces anyway. It's, it's, you know, first come, first served. It's just been a hassle. They can't even turn to the west on their street. If they're coming down, headed south, turning right, people are parking into the intersection of 12th and Mississippi, doesn't seem to be monitored. They're having people park in front of their house where there's no parking, and it's just continually going on down the street where there's no parking and no one's monitoring it. So, it would be my wish, like I said, it's always been the safety of everybody who ever lives on that street, that, you know, the city adopt, or, you know, go along with the referral of the Traffic Safety Commission and the fire chief, and either one day maybe remove the median where, where people can have parking. That, to me, would be the most logical thing, is just get rid of the median, plow it down so that you could have the best of both worlds. But for now, I think safety has to outrule six parking spots on that street. So, if you do go ahead and adopt this, I would, I would hope that the city would, would let the owners of, like, those businesses know that the changes have been made, maybe a letter sent to them, telling them that a change has been implemented, because if no one's going to monitor and aggressively, you know, follow through at this parking, it's just going to continue, because kids are in a hurry, people are in a hurry, they just want to park it wherever they can. So, anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, I really didn't plan to speak tonight, but sometimes it just feels like there should be a broad representation of what some of the facts are. At any rate, my name is Carol Von Tersch. I live in this block. I've lived there for thirty years. I have always driven down the north side of the street. I have never, ever not been able to make that turn from either direction off of Indiana to go down to my house. I have never, ever not been able to get through, and I have never seen anybody sideswiped until this past year. So, I sort of personally feel like this request is coming from the five young men who live in the house on the bottom of the hill, and because it's not convenient for them. But one thing I did want to say in response to, to the presentation on the part of the city staff, I was at the October meeting, and I did testify, and there wasn't anyone at that meeting in favor of taking the parking off, except the fire chief and the five young men who made this request. I just want to clarify that, that's not, was not accurately reported. Personally, I don't care a whole lot one way or another, whether there's parking there or not, because I have enough parking in my driveway for four people, so, you know, that's not a big personal issue for me, although it's a lot harder for people to come and visit if they can't park in the street, and they have to, you know, walk a couple of blocks to come and visit. But again, as I say, I could go either way on that issue. If the fire chief feels that that's the best thing for us, to have that fire protection, I'd go along with that. Thank you very much for the opportunity to express myself.
Last question.
Carol. Question.
Yes.
Carol, is, is there no parking on the south side?
There's no parking on the south side so that emergency vehicles can come down on the south side.
Okay. That's what it looked like on the picture here, although.
Again, I was a little surprised at the fire chief's opinion on that, because there, there have been some fires in the area in the thirty years or so that I've lived there. My next-door neighbors had a fire some years ago, and they didn't bring the fire truck down, they just leave it up in the intersection on Indiana and 12th. And I just assumed that's how it would be handled now. But other emergency vehicles just come down on the south side. I can attest to that. I had an ambulance at my house at least five times in a period of, of two years. And, you know, that's the reason why the parking was taken off on the south side, but it's always been left on the north side, because there's one property on the north side that has absolutely no parking. And, so I don't know where those tenants will go if they can't park, you know, in the block where they live.
Is, is that the house that's furthest west? The one in the middle and the west?
The house that's furthest west is the one that's occupied by the five young men.
Okay, which, in which house?
It's the next, it's the next one up the hill. It's a triplex.
Okay.
And it has three parking spaces in front of the triplex. A few years ago, before the hotel was built, most of the traffic was, in that block, was students seeking a free place to park. Since the hotel is there, we don't have that student traffic, but what we have now is the hotel employees that are parking in that block. And I think that, that's probably a little more of an aggravation for some of the tenants who live on the, on the north side of the 1200 block. Again, it's, it's, I go either way with it, because I have four parking spaces in my driveway, and so it's not a big issue for me. I would just, would like everyone who lives in the area to be sensitive to the needs and the, the values of the other people who live there. Thank you.
Sir, further public comment on this? Back to the commission then. Any questions?
Question for staff. Is, in that center median there, I'm looking at the overhead view of the street and the parking, is there a, can you drive through, or can you pass through the center of that median, in the middle of the median? Is that, no? It looks like you can on this.
Yeah, about halfway through, there is a small break in there where you can make that turn, depending on the size of your vehicle.
Right in the middle, there's a.
Yeah. This way.
No.
I don't think you're pulling the fire truck through there.
No, I know.
Get rid of the median, we can, yeah, find a few more parking spaces.
What is the reason for the median there? What's?
It's, it's always been there. It is historic, according to information from Planning and Development Services.
David, how many parking spaces are there on the north side of that street?
There's about six right now.
Six? Okay. Sunday morning, I went up through there, and it was extremely tight, because as one of the people said, I don't think anybody was parked within a foot of the, of the, oh, the curb line there. So, it, it was pretty close. My little pickup's fine, but I was just wondering if there was any, any cars parked farther down to the west there? You know, there's no way that you could get anything through there, but, yeah, I, I think the big thing here is, is that the, the center median is, is wide enough that it takes, you know, some of the traffic, or, you know, that, that aisle way through there. And, you know, that concerns me from the standpoint of emergency services being able to get, and specifically the fire truck, you know, one of our fire trucks in there to take care of folks if they need help. So, I, I just don't think that you could get it down that way. Carol, if.
Could I ask Carol a question, please?
Sure. Yeah.
When, the response that we have had for a fire truck that has come down that street, you said that they, they always come on the south side? Did I understand that?
Not, fire truck, emergency vehicles, ambulances.
Okay. They use the south side?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And, but, you know, that's, north side seems real narrow to people who don't come there all the time, like you said, how, how tight it was.
It was, it wasn't for me.
Well, my daughters and my grandsons all drive big pickups, and they come down there and through that center median and into my driveway, and have, they, they have never not been able to get through.
Okay.
But, you know, like I said, I can go either way on it. I, I know that it would have a marked effect on the property on the north side that's in the center of the street, because he has absolutely no parking at all, and it's a triplex.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Will we ever get past parking in the Oriad?
We're still trying to get a couple of feet from, from Memorial Stadium. We're, we haven't gone very far this evening.
I guess, one, one thought I had was, I mean, if it's really, if it's just a safety issue, then it'd be a no-brainer for me. I, I didn't really understand the five-three vote, because Traffic Safety Commission, there were a couple of votes that were voted. One didn't feel like it was consensus to neighbors, and another felt like we shouldn't take spots from taxpaying people. But those aren't safety, I thought that, that commission was to validate whether it was a safety issue or not. So, a little, wasn't that, that helpful. I mean, we've got the police chief saying it's a safety issue, the majority of the commission saying it's a safety issue, and at least two of the three no votes didn't give, you know, didn't even address the safety issue with their vote. They voted on something unrelated, or reason unrelated, so, you know, if that's all we have to go on, as long as that median's there, I'm, I'm, I believe I'd have to support the vote of.
Incurrents.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll agree with that.
The, the thought I have, too, is if, if indeed curbside parking is creating a safety issue at this location, it's creating that same safety issue all over town. I mean, if you can't, I presume, from what everyone has said, that it's because you can't get the ladder truck over to a bedroom window because it, it's located too far away from the distance that they would have to travel down, but it seems to me like you've got that issue in lots of different areas.
But in this particular case, Vice Mayor, you have a center median down through that only.
Okay, so you can't.
It only gives you nine feet of space to get down through there.
So, in the other, other places without a center median, you'd have the center of the street.
Yeah, you would have the street to work with.
It's a little tighter.
The question, the, you know, the, the, the real thing here is, is that whether or not, you know, the safety issues are going to take precedence over everything else, because you can't get, you know, an emerg, you know, the, the big ladder truck down this street to be able to provide service in the event of a fire to those, those three properties that are in that area. What's amazing, we're talking about parking, and, you know, the need for more parking, and we're considered taking it away. and we're considered taking it away. And I don't think we're going to be touching the medians.
No, I don't think so. Not this time. Questions, comments? Motions?
Mayor?
I have a question.
Shoot.
When did we prohibit parking on the south side? Anyone do any investigation on that? And how long has the south, oh, oh, we got, we got historical accuracy.
Request went to the city after I bought the house thirty years ago.
So you requested no parking on the south side?
Well, my husband did, at the time, because of emergency vehicles.
Yeah.
To, to get them down there. At any rate...
So it was a citizen's request, landowner's request?
Yes.
And your concern was safety at the time?
Yes. Yes.
So how long has that been, Carol?
Thirty years ago.
Glad you're here. Thank you.
So at that time, we would have had the same median, the same cul-de-sac, and there's no way we could have gotten anything down around that. I can't imagine, anyway.
Bucket Brigade.
Yeah.
At that point.
Shoot.
Mayor, I'd move that we approve the request to establish no parking along the north side of 12th Street between Indiana and Mississippi.
Second. Motion made by Vice Mayor Shum, seconded by Commissioner Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Next, our last up, this evening, we're, we requested some additional clarification at the conclusion of, of our meeting last time, and we have an answer.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner Scott McCullough with the Planning Office. Last week, the commission was prepared to initiate a text amendment to increase the minimum gross structure size eligible to receive a, a reduced parking standard for congregate living and multi-dwelling uses. However, the commission requested information on whether attic space was included in the data presented by staff, data which reflected the potential impact to the Oriad neighborhood relative to parking. As the memo reflects, attic space that is accessed by a fixed stairway is included in the living area data used to calculate the structure size. This by and large validates the research exercise of trying to understand the impact to the neighborhood and would support last week's proposal to use 4,500 square feet as the structure size that would yield approximately four and a half percent of Oriad parcels eligible for the standard. The details will need to be worked out through the text amendment process, but a motion consistent with last week's discussion is available for your consideration tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the packet.
Great. Thanks for the, thank you for the clarification on that. Any other questions? Does this, I think the, the question was whether or not we, we, we knew the impact of what we were, what we were prepared to initiate, and I think this answers the question, so.
One question, staff, if I could.
Yeah.
Scott, since this is an amendment that's going to affect properties all over the community, and you and I had, you know, a short discussion before the meeting, you know of other places in the community that, that this amendment may affect, not individual properties, but different areas that may be affected because of size of lot and size of structure?
Commissioner Amick, we haven't done an exhaustive analysis in other areas like we have Oriad, so I can't say that we know of a specific parcel outside of Oriad. We can assume that there are some, some established neighborhoods that could have very similar development patterns that, that this would be applied to, yes.
Okay. But we don't know of any other, other part of the community where we're going to have a large impact of, of potential requests?
I think, historically, we have not had that pattern. It has primarily been in the Oriad neighborhood, but there are several boarding houses outside of Oriad as well.
Okay. So as we look in the information that you provided for us, that the 20 addresses that had been singled out as potential sites where, where boarding house, where, where this text amendment is, these properties are going to meet the requirements of this text amendment. What happens to other properties? They can go ahead and make the request, a boarding house?
As this is, would be applied citywide, if they're eligible, if they meet the two-pronged criteria for structure size and lot size, then they would be eligible to receive the reduced parking standard as well. If this text amendment is initiated, we'll attempt to do the, kind of a similar exercise in other areas of pockets of RM zoned property and bring that forward with the text amendment.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
Following our discussion last week, this is exactly what we had. Clarification is to make sure that we, we got an understanding of what is included, what is not included, and I think staff's doing a good job of reconciling that, so you know.
But is, if I could, one more. As, as we look at, you know, the, the Oriad plan and, and the fact that we're going to develop these overlay district areas, what is going to happen as we get into the future a little bit, as we set up these districts, and, and what, what that's going to look like as, as it pertains to boarding houses?
Although, they will certainly be a component of the design guideline planning exercise, so that there may be more, even more specific standards related to how properties converted to a congregate living facility. It may be additional restrictions on the number of bedrooms, on the addition size, on, related to parking. It may open up and make some areas of Oriad more flexible than what the current code is. It's going to be, the intent of the overlay districts is that they are intended to be sort of a very specific to the area set of zoning guidelines and standards that are meant to address very specific context issues. And so it, it will likely have an effect on this amendment as it goes through. At the end of the day, it, it may be that a completely different set of standards affects boarding houses in the Oriad district.
In fact, could build on that, yeah.
Go ahead.
So essentially, you know, as it stands right now, if we just go on the square footage, then they are where they are, based on their sizes, and they may or may not really make sense. I mean, as we actually go to plan the neighborhood with overlay districts and whatnot, that's where we get to take a good look with neighbor input and, as, as well as the investment community, as far as where it really makes most sense for the neighborhood, because we're looking at quality of life issues as well. And there, there's blocks that may not have, you know, the right larger home or whatever on that particular block that makes sense for another boarding house, and so the overlay district then kind of supersedes. We get to be very intentional. Right now, we're kind of saying, we, we've put a limit on it by saying 20 net new, but they're really just kind of out there where we may or may not necessarily want to see another boarding house, whereas the next level of planning on this will be to say, here's the spots and here's what they got, have to look like with design guidelines, et cetera. That's, it's my understanding, anyway.
So then is this text amendment that, that we're looking at tonight that is going to be dealing with the square foot of these properties, is this just going to give us kind of a holding time until we get to the overlay district areas that'll be established?
It will either give us a, a time to, to hold it, or it will end up being the preferred choice as the overlay districts are established and the base zoning standards are accepted and adopted as such.
My guess is, is we'll, we'll establish some amount of precedent and, and we'll carry some weight with it with the overlay district, but then hopefully the overlay district has much broader scope. They'll take a look at the whole, the whole neighborhood and the effects of, of any sort of boarding house and parking issues, and, and they'll be able to have a lot, and they may make some changes, but I, but I do think that it's, probably is going to have a little bit of impact.
So as we look at this right now, Mayor, that this item would go before Planning Commission, March?
Probably March.
March, back to us in April?
Yes, sir.
The overlay districts to us in...
Uh, the fall of this year. Right. All right. We just, we just got approval to get our consultant on board tonight, so we're going to get busy on that and get that going in spring and summer.
Yeah, so potentially, yeah, we're, we're talking about a few months' worth of, you know, this in effect before, before we have an overlay district, but...
Potentially, there's a chance, you know, depending on, on time and all of this, this commission may not decide that issue.
True.
True. Got it.
Yeah, because that's going to be the first time it overlays come to us is in the fall. I mean, that's going to be, that's the big project. That's kind of what I was saying is that...
You don't think that's going to be on consent?
Yeah, this is... But we can put this portion to bed for now.
Yeah.
Look, yeah.
Till later.
For now. Okay.
Good enough. It's right up on the, I think...
That, that would be the entire motion that would initiate it for us.
It's a public speaking opportunity. It's a whole speech.
I'm happy to just give that to Jonathan if you want to summarize.
Second. Motion to initiate text amendment made by Vice Mayor Shum, seconded by Commissioner Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-1. Commissioner Deverin, dissension. Very good. Is there public comment of a general nature this evening? If not, we'll move on to future agenda items. Dave?
No meeting next week. Following week, we've got memorandum that follows up on earlier discussion regards to the use of said fact term.
Okay.
That issue, issue is, and we'll probably have a number of other items for that. That's going to be on the February 7th City Commission Agenda. Probably have a number of other items since we're skipping a week.
Great.
Going to have the, I think we're, I think we're in pretty good shape on the, the contract for the master planning on a farmland property. Been working on that. Chuck and Matt and Scott and I have been negotiating with Bartleton West to make sure that we're getting all of the different elements in that contract. So we'll probably have that, probably that should be ready with consent agenda, if that's where it needs to go. And we're working on a number of other projects as well.
Great. Commission items? Calendar? No meeting?
So do you have, do we have the Youth of the Year, Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year on the calendar yet, or has that been...
Commissioner, I'm not aware of that. You want me to check on that?
Yeah, if we could.
Do you know when that is?
We may not have gotten it. I want to say it's the, it's February.
So...
Oh, shoot. It is, it is March. Yes.
Boys and Girls Club sponsors, that, it's a...
I'll make sure and get it to you.
Okay, that'd be great.
Tomorrow.
Thanks.
Great, yeah, we'll get that, get that on there. Big deal. Good. Anything else calendar-wise?
Don't believe so.
If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made?
Second.
Your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We are adjourned. Thank you.